All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March 21 city council meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. It's seven ten. Our first order of business tonight is our invocation and our pledge of allegiance, I think. We do them at the same time. We have a representative of the LDS Church here tonight for our invocation, and then please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance.
Our dear heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity that we have to meet together as a community, and we're grateful for all the blessings that we have in this great city. We're grateful for the leaders that serve here. Please bless them that they can continue to do so and be able to lead and guide us. We're mindful of those that are struggling, those that are in need. Help us as a community to come together and know how we can help, help us to reach out to other sources of assistance as well. We ask you to bless this nation, that it continues to prosper and continues to be a leader in this world, help the leaders to guide and lead this nation. Bless us, our individual selves, that we can spend time with our families, learn and grow with them, and provide for our young children. These things we ask in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Do you join me as we pledge allegiance to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much for the invocation, and thank you, Mr. Powell.
Absolutely.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the item C, C1, 2, 3, and 4.
C1 is consider approval of the city council regular meeting minutes from March 7, 2022, as presented.
Wait a minute, I forgot the roll call. Went right by it. Gloria, please let the rolls, roll calls show that all members of the council are present.
So noted.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Powell. You may go now.
I got this down. I can do it again.
You got it, you got it.
C1 is to consider the approval of the city council regular meeting minutes from March 7, as presented. C2 is to consider accepting the Casa Grande Charter Committee minutes from February 10, 2022, for the record. C3 is consider attempting the Casa Grande Planning and Zoning, accepting the Casa Grande Planning and Zoning Commission minutes for February 3, as recorded, for the records. Consider accepting the Casa Grande Youth Commission minutes for February 5, 2022, for the record. Mayor, that should be it.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes have been approved. Next is item D1, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated March 2 through 15, 2022, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Next item is our meeting agenda. This is tonight's agenda. Is there any changes from staff? Council members, anyone here to change? I do, I want to make one change because I think we have an executive session tonight. So I will move our reports before item M. The reports will be after L6. Okay, entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the, tonight's agenda is approved. Move to the next item, which is consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anything on here that you all want to pull off? Anything from staff? Anything from the members, members of the public?
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item on our agenda is item H, which is our public comments. This is when I will open the floor to anyone in the public or anyone present today to address the council. I would remind you to please state your name, keep your comments to three minutes, and the items that you bring up are not on our agenda, so therefore we cannot respond to them, but will give staff direction to follow up at a later time. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, John McGuire, 5088 West Buckskin Drive, and Eloy. So it's been a while since I've seen you in person here, although I have, of course, been following on the many ways I can watch you now electronically, and that's really quite nice, frankly, since I don't have that many needs to come up here anymore in my view to voice things. But I did want to take a moment tonight with the items that are, were in the study session particularly, and thank staff and the council for getting those in front of us. Most of you know that these have been items that were very, very important to me over my years that I was living in Casa Grande, and I still, of course, work here and spend a lot of money here, and I'm happy that those two items are moving forward. It's easy for me to get up here and say, you know, tax yourselves on your property rate, tax rate now, because I won't be paying it, but to mitigate that, I have pledged to, whatever bonds pass, however much my average would have been if I was a city Casagrande resident, I'll donate that much every year to the Boys and Girls Club for, to make sure that people understand that I'm committed to those things that I had advocated for so many years before this. I wish we could have done tonight's meeting a year ago, because unfortunately, interest rates are already considerably higher than they were last year, but it is what it is. They're still historically very low. And I'm going to pile on one more thing for you. As much as the mayor made a very good point, and I understand his position and the PRTA board's position, they're thinking of everybody in the county, and that, you know, it's a different role he's in at that meeting, right? So he needs to make sure he's watching out for what's best for that board that he signed up to be on. And so I understand that, and I hear that we're going to do these bonds, and we have now the elementary school district possibly as well. Two things. First, on the bonds, I think some of the members we're trying, or council members we're trying to get at tonight, that it's important that we, as we're promoting the passage of these, that we make people understand that we might not spend it all the way this is. This is just the ability to do it this way, if need be. As City Council Manager Rain said, there could be impact fees that cover it, other funds that cover things, lots of ways these can get paid for, but I talked, you know, all the people I talked to in my group, and believe me, they want this stuff done, you know, to the point where I even asked this weekend, with all the things we just talked about, would you even support us, another election issue of a city-specific sales tax, even with PRTA, even with the bonds, even with the, 90% of the people that responded said, yes, let us make the choice of whether we want to approve XYZ. I get it, there's a risk if we start throwing tax after tax on the bond, some people could say, well, forget it, I'm not going to give you anything. But it's already pretty heavy, just a consideration, and, you know, I'm getting the people that are willing to pay for this stuff right now. They, they want these improvements made, and if that means they have to pay for it in advance to save some money in the future and get the benefits of that quality of life now, they seem to be indicating to me, the ones that I talked to, and I only have 3,000 people, and not all of them participate in everything, but I think it's sort of representative of a reasonable chunk of people, so glad to see you all again tonight, glad we're moving forward on some of these things. I know the mayor's excited about his DMO project tonight as well, so have a great night and good to see everybody.
Thank you, John. Anyone else?
You have to kick me.
Okay, seeing no one, then I will close the public comments, and we'll move on to I1, which is a word of contracts. And Paul, this, oh, nope, sorry, Kevin, you?
I go by many names.
Your public works, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with Franklin Striping out of Phoenix, Arizona, through AmeriCopa County Contract Number 210109-S. And that's for the installation of painted stripes, roadway markings, raised pavement markings, as well as striping obliteration for certain projects throughout the city in an amount not to exceed $400,481. Staff is requesting authorization to use this AmeriCopa contract. It's the quickest way for us to get this project contracted, and right now, we're having a real challenge finding contractors that are available to do any projects, so this is a good way for us to move forward, very cost-effective way. The pricing is very competitive in, in what we've seen in the market so far. And this will take care of striping all the areas throughout the city that we've done our evaluation on and just aren't meeting the reflectivity standards that we try to maintain throughout the city. But I'd also like to identify one project that we're working on, and that's to restripe the intersection at McCartney Road and Treacle Road intersection. If you've driven through there in the mornings and the afternoons, very difficult for cars to make that southbound turning movement from McCartney to Treacle. We're going to restripe that to allow a little extra room for those vehicles and see if that can't help improve that intersection in the interim until we are able to move forward with a construction project in the future to widen that road. We do have adequate funds in our budget, as well as we have got a 15% contingency built into this, not to exceed price, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, anyone? All right, thank you, Kevin. Seeing none, I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 3326, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Franklin Striping, Inc. for the annual pavement preservation program, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Franklin Striping, Inc. in accordance with the terms submitted to AmeriCopa County.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 3326, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Count, Mayor Protam Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, move into item K's. K1, excuse me.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Back on January 3, we had a study session that kind of outlined the boards and commissions' project update that we, that staff had been working on with the mayor, with Councilmember McBride. And so tonight, we're bringing to you phase one of that project. I know you're going to be excited, because you get to do five ordinances and a resolution. If council wouldn't, doesn't want to hear from me six times, I'd like to do one presentation, and then you can certainly ask questions on each, on each ordinance, and I assume council is going to be happy with that. So just to remind council, as we started this framework, we kind of had five or six sort of goals to do. One of those was to increase membership on boards for consistency and participation. One of those was to amend the terms of the boards, to use three years when we could for consistency. We have some that are two, some three, some four, so we're trying to use three for consistency. To disband the boards that have kind of broken up or we don't regularly use, to create new boards to combine duties where they're appropriate. And then we were also going to look at sort of changing the code sections to just sort of update them for best practices and actual practices of the city. So tonight, we're bringing five of those items to you. The first ordinance that you'll be considering will actually increase the Airport Advisory Board to seven members to meet the, the goal that, that the boards that are logically incapable of doing so would move to, to seven. As we set these up, we have worked with the clerk's office, and you'll see in a couple of the ordinances that if we're increasing the numbers, that we're putting in essentially the ability to stagger it. The goal with seven members is to make sure that all of these boards ultimately have three on one term, two on one term, two on one term, so that way you're not losing big chunks of that inability, and so you'll, you'll notice that as we kind of do those. The second one is going to be to move the Board of Appeals from a four-year term to a three-year. That actually requires a resolution and an ordinance, and you probably don't care why, but it's really because we adopted it as, through reference, so we have to do the resolution, making the amendment a public record, and then we do the ordinance as well. Again, that's just going to change the Board of Appeals from four-year terms to three-year terms. And as part of that, we are working, again, with the clerk's office to try to make sure that we kind of hit those natural terms as we implement these, and council, you know, the mayor, with the approval of council, will be making all the changes as you go through and, and appoint new members to the boards or reappoint members to the boards. The third ordinance tonight would be to disband the Personnel Advisory Board, and the reason we're doing that is, as council will remember, you amended our personnel policy to move to a hearing officer. So that Personnel Advisory Board, there's no more cases that can come before it, so we'd be moving from that to a hearing officer format, so we're disbanding that. We disband the Health Trust Board. We had a self-funded plan for a little while, that has now wrapped up, and so the ordinance there would disband that and move forward on that as well. And also the Clean and Beautiful Advisory Board, we actually haven't done any work, I think, since like 2011 with that board. It had kind of transitioned to, to staff, and the thought was, we might as well close that up. And the next item tonight, we're going to deal with a Community Services Board, and they could discuss that with them as well. The fourth item is to get rid of the Library Advisory Board, the Golf Course Advisory Committee, and the Parks and Rec Board as it comprises today, to form a new Community Services Board. This one's actually been ready, and since it's a golf board, teed up for a while, but we've been, we've been waiting on that to try to bring in as part of the, the board process. Some of these boards, like the Golf Course and the Library Advisory Board, just, I don't know, I can't remember if Library has people now, but we haven't even appointed people the last several years to those boards as we get ready to, to move them. So even though we're kind of pulling back three, what's ultimately going to happen is you've got five sitting members on the Parks and Advisory Board, and the new Community Services Board would have seven, so there'll be more people that will, will be involved. And finally, we're doing an ordinance, as I said, to sort of conform to the best practices of the city. And if you've had a chance to look at the ordinance, we're making just a couple of technical changes. For example, our code today says that your members must be an elector of the city, but consistently through the past 20-plus years, that's been read to be resident, even though it says elector. So we're just trying to clean up some of those things. We also took that opportunity, as we discussed in the study session, to add for a provision for a youth membership to be included on the committee. Obviously, anyone 18 or older, capable of voting, capable of being a full member, but for those members under 18, we've given the opportunity for the mayor and council, where it deems appropriate, to appoint a youth member. As we drafted that, if you look at the ordinance, you'll find that we limited those circumstances somewhat, so for example, if the board is a, sitting in a quasi-judicial capacity, acting as a judge, the youth commission member would have to step down for, for that item, right? So the ones, there's certain ones that you may not be able to do, but it'll certainly give you the opportunity, if there's interest there, to allow youth members. And it's not limited to just youth commission members, it's youth members of the, of the community in doing that. So, and then a couple of other just minor changes in that. There are three other items that we'll be considering at a later meeting. I was looking at maybe April 18, but I've seen what that agenda looks like, so it may be the first meeting in May. But it's going to be two items that had to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we'll have to have a public hearing, and that's the historic, moving the heritage into the Historic Preservation Commission, as well as, I forget if I remember the other one, oh, changing the Board of Adjustment members. Both of those are in our Title 17, so they had to go through that. And then the Public Safety Advisory Board, we're working with the departments to get a draft out of that. Happy to answer any other questions that you might have, but those are the six fun items you get to consider tonight.
Thank you, Brett. Does anybody have any questions or comments on, on it?
Just a comment to Brett and the staff, because this has been a really big undertaking, and, and he's done a really great job working with us and questioning us, and it's been a long time coming, so.
Yeah, I did of that comment, so thank you to your staff. And to you, Brett.
Comment, and I think you explained it, I just wanted to make sure we weren't losing someone that might be interested in being involved, but it sounds like the committees that you have need more members, so it's not like you're going to be doing away with, you know, someone that really wants to participate.
Yeah, and we, and we did, we did offer up other positions on other boards if, if someone was affected or if somebody was interested in another board, so I think we've accommodated everybody who's been interested.
And, and to that point, I think the only ones that are really still active are all the ones that have been disbanded, that we no longer can do anymore, right? So no one's on the Clean and Beautiful, but there was a Health Trust Board.
He was on the library, he was on the golf course.
But we've wound those up, and as the mayor said, hopefully they'll be interested in serving in other capacities.
Right. Thank you.
You know, and I also, to Lisa's point, is really good, because one of the things that we've been doing is we've been doing the interviews on some of these boards, as people have been coming in if we anticipated, you know, there might be a change, or like the Community Services, we've talked about that with them and say there may be a change to the name and, and some of the things, so we've been kind of working on that a little bit.
Yeah, I, every, we've talked to probably almost every board member, I think, so should, there shouldn't be any surprises. We sent out a letter to them all, so I think we've communicated.
Any objections, or were they all okay with it?
No, yeah, everybody was fine.
Thank you, guys, for.
Thank you, yeah.
That's a lot of work.
It's about three years, something like that. Anyway, okay, any other questions or comments on this? All right, seeing none, then I'll take each one at a time, or, yeah, let's do, consider approval of an ordinance number 1397.02.18.
Ordinance number 1397.02.18, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending sections 2.28.030, membership, and 2.28.040, administrative structure quorum of chapter 2.28, Airport Advisory Board of Title II, Administration and Personnel of the City of Casa Grande Municipal Code, to change the number of Airport Advisory Board members, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1397.02.18, as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, next item is approval of a resolution number 5397, be the second item in this category.
Ordinance number 5397, I'm sorry, resolution number 5397, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, declaring as public record that certain document entitled the 2022 amendments to the City of Casa Grande Building and Technical Administrative Code, 2019 edition.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of resolution number 5397.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, the third item is consider approval of ordinance number 1397.15.24.
Ordinance number 1397.15.24, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, relating to the amendment of section 113.3 of the City of Casa Grande Building and Technical Administrative Code, 2019 edition, concerning the term lengths of the members of the Board of Appeals, adopting the 2022 amendment to the City of Casa Grande Building and Technical Administrative Code, 2019 edition, by reference, amending section 15.04.010 of the City of Casa Grande Municipal Code, concerning the Casa Grande Building and Technical Administrative Code, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 1397.15.24, as presented. Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, item four is consider the approval of ordinance number 1397.02.19.
Ordinance number 1397.02.19, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Casa Grande, disbanding the Personnel Advisory Board, disbanding the Clean and Beautiful Advisory Board, disbanding the Healthcare Benefits Trust Board by deleting chapter 2.42 of the City of Casa Grande Municipal Code, repealing the resolution that created the City of Casa Grande Healthcare Benefits Trust, establishing a procedure for the approval of the minutes from, from the final board meeting, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 1397.02.19, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, the fifth item on this list is consider the approval of ordinance number
Ordinance number 1397.02.20, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, repealing the Library Advisory Board, the Golf Course Advisory Committee, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, amending chapter 2.30 of the City of Casa Grande Municipal Code, to establish a Community Service Advisory Board, establishing a procedure for the approval of the minutes for the final board meeting of the disbanded boards, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mayor McFarland, I move to approve ordinance number 1397.02.20, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and, and a second, or can I get a roll call vote, please, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protam Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes.
All right, and the last one on our list is consider the approval of ordinance number
Ordinance number 1397.02.21, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending sections .010, .020, .030, .050, .070, and .090 of chapter 2.36, Boards, Committees, and Commissions generally of Title II of the Casa Grande Municipal Code, establishing the severability of the various sections of the ordinance, and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1397.02.21, as presented. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride. Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. And Brett, is it appropriate if I gave, if I give Gloria and her staff some direction on this subject? Just.
I will let you know if you need to stop.
I just, Gloria, I just want to make sure we send letters to the affected board members, make sure that we give them the outline of their new boards that they're on, so we need to do that, since this is obviously public records, and make sure that we get that information out to them as soon as possible. Not all the boards, because we haven't done all of them, but just the ones here tonight. Thank you. So that was okay? Okay. All right, let's move to item L1, this is our first public hearing. This is on proposal for amendment of the city tax code. And Gail, is this your baby here? All right. There's no action on this tonight, but it is a public hearing, so.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On January 6, 2020, the Greater Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce presented to Mayor and Council the concept of creating a destination marketing organization for, I'm sorry, the concept of creating a destination marketing organization for the purpose of promoting Casa Grande as a tourist destination. The, that organization will be funded through an increase, a proposed increase in hotel motel additional tax rate. Currently, the rate is at 2%, and the proposal is to increase that rate by an additional 3%, not to exceed 5% in total. If the City of Casa Grande wants to compete against other cities, we must position ourselves as an attractive place, where there would be knowledgeable workers, a place for investors to come in and invest, where there will be enough cultural and sporting events to accommodate the citizens of the city, where we will have adequate technology and innovation to take care of the needs of not only the businesses that we would be attracting, but also the visitors, where there would be diversity, and adequate infrastructure for all of the components that would make, come together to make the city an attractive and successful one in terms of tourism. The DMO, the DMO, which is the Destination Marketing Organization Advisory Board, will consist of nine members, including elected city representatives, city employee representative, chamber representative, downtown alliance, and two to three hotel representatives, and two to three private business representatives, including restaurant, bar, and entertainment. The DMO will engage in print and digital public relations outreach, including but not limited to branding, billboards, printed material, social media presence, public relations, including outbound noteworthy stories to news sources and a visitor website. Funding mechanism, as I indicated earlier, for the DMO would be revenue derived from the increase in hotel motel additional tax rate. That would be bed tax, bed tax is paid by tourists, by visitors, and the proceed would therefore be reinvested to attract new visitors and businesses to the community. The current retail tax rate is 1.8% to the general fund, and 2% bed tax currently allocated to youth and youth services, which would remain. Most jurisdictions in Maricopa County collect a 5% bed tax. Pima County is even higher than what we're proposing. Raising the bed tax by 3% from 2% to 5% in total should provide a desired level of funding, and 100% of the increase would be used in these marketing efforts. Upon approval by the City Council, the city will partner with the Greater Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce, under a separate DMO-appointed manager and board, to effectively market the city as a preferred destination in Arizona. This is only a public hearing and does not require any action from the board at this time.
All right, thank you. Does council have any questions or comments? Lisa?
The slide that you had, who, who will be on the board, can you flip to that, right here? So the chamber is the one that is going to coordinate this, the advisory board? Okay. And I just wanted to, you know, I think it's important, I mean, I love the, you know, the diverse representation, but I do want to make sure that we're looking at, you know, I mean, when we talk about marketing, you know, Spanish language, and we do live in Arizona, so I'm really hoping that these representatives, you can get some Spanish language, or someone that markets to that community, to make sure that we're incorporating that into our marketing.
Mayor, members of the council, although Angel's presentation went into kind of the DMO, that is not on the agenda tonight.
Oh.
For discussion or consideration, council will have to consider that separately. The only item agendized tonight, and I realize it's in the presentation, to let people kind of understand, you know, what the plan is for the money, if the tax is improved, but tonight is solely for the public hearing on the tax rate increase. Staff will be bringing back an item later.
With the details.
Concerning the actual tax increase, as well as details concerning.
The DMO.
The manner of spending.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Now, nobody's going to say anything. Mr., be careful. Go ahead.
You going to slap me, or what?
No, no Brett might, though.
The city will work with the Greater Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce to create a destination.
We're not talking about that today.
And I may have not, I may not have spoken in the microphone well enough, but tonight is only, and I realize it was in the presentation, but tonight is only about the public hearing on the tax increase. That's the only thing we've put on the agenda, so we'll have the opportunity to discuss those items on the DMO at a, at a later date.
The only thing I was wondering about, having been in business, people are going to have problems with this.
We, well, we'll talk.
Yeah, and again, for the DMO piece, that's a separate item that council will get the chance to discuss.
Okay.
And consider, just not tonight.
Good.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just build on Mr. Wallace's comments, the, the city, the city's staff is working on a services agreement that ultimately the mayor and council would consider at some point, we can, and I'm just trying to give you the context, so, but that will be a future item that will be coming before the mayor and council.
All right, so this is a public hearing, so I will open the floor to any comments or question, or not questions, but comments regarding the, the proposed bed tax, not the content of the.
The DMO.
Presentation. All right, seeing no one, then I will close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the next item. Item L2, this is also a public hearing, this is approval of ordinance number 1178.418, Planning and Development. Jaclyn?
Did we push all of the, all of the, did they already know about it?
Okay. Good. Good.
Community mayor, members of the council.
That'd be good.
Next item on the agenda is a zone change request from R2 to B3, which is known as Block 36 of the Casa Grande Townsite subdivision. It's bounded by Dry Lake to the north, excuse me, to the west, Third Street to the north, Toltec Road to the east, and Second Street to the south. This is currently a city-owned property, and we are requesting this zone change from R2 to B3, which is the downtown zoning, and this allows for a wide range of uses, including commercial and multifamily. So here's the current zoning as is, with the proposed zoning to B3. In reviewing the zone change review criteria, the staff report goes into additional detail, but it looks at the city's general plan. The site is Zone B3, which is an appropriate zoning district for the downtown. One of the goals is to develop a strategy for downtown development, redevelopment, and adaptive reuse, and to encourage the conversion of vacant and or underutilized sites to more intensive urban uses. The rezoning to the B3 will allow the most flexibility with regards to uses, setbacks, and parking. Once proposal for the development is received, at the time of major site plan, the city will conduct community meetings, at this time it is just for the rezoning of the sites. Staff met or exceeded the public hearing requirements. I did receive one phone call and one email inquiring about this request, but it was just inquiries about what the request was for. So with that, planning commission forward to city council, a favorable recommendation to approve the zone change request from R2 to B3, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Does the council have any questions on this piece? This is a city, city piece of property across from St. Anthony's, familiar with that location.
Just a comment, and I, because it seems like we just changed this to R2, didn't we?
No.
In the last couple of years, we changed it to R2?
I don't think so.
No? It's been R2 for a while?
Yeah.
Okay, but I know, my, my only comment is, because of course, I go to the church right across street, and people park in that lot. You know, of course, we have an issue with parking downtown, and so, I don't, but is there a project that's going in here? Is that, I think I read in Planning and Zoning that there really isn't anything specifically?
Councilmember Fitzgibbons, staff is working, but it's, nothing is solid yet, so we're looking at rezoning these to make it more marketable, really.
Okay. Because we, because B3, you can put multifamily housing.
Correct. With a conditional use permit, yes.
Okay.
And it's the most flexible in terms of use.
You can put business down below and apartments on top.
Right. And it, this was something I think Chikana's Porlo Kausa was looking at at some point, is that still the case?
They still are, yeah. They still are.
They are? Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Okay, any other questions? This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the floor to the public at this point in time. This is on ordinance number 1178 dot 418, converting R2 to B3.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman. My name is Jody Gittins. For the record, it's J-O-D-Y-G-I-T-T-I-N-S, and I represent St. Vincent's, and we just had a couple of questions about the differences between a B1 designation, a B2 designation, and a B3 designation. And does B3 include apartment buildings? What I could find on the website didn't say so. And so there's a genuine concern, being across the street from the church and the school, of what kind of businesses may be going in, and that, that's our comment. We're just concerned and want more information.
Well, we can have somebody give her the definition of the B3. You, if you'll give our staff your name, we can, we can certainly do that, or, or planning group can do that as well.
Mayor, you want me to give a quick?
If you want, yeah, unless you'd like it in writing or something. Is a verbal description okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So B1 and B2 are, B2 is your normal commercial zoning, those have more setbacks, and do not allow for any multifamily or housing development. The B3 does allow for mixed uses, including multifamily development with the conditional use permit, and that would go along with a major site plan that would be heard at planning commission.
Okay, so.
So it would be another, it would be a public hearing for that.
So just be watching for public hearings on this.
Yes, so yeah, once, once a development is proposed, we will be having community meetings for the public.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Matt, did you have a comment?
That's where all the buses park after the electric light parade, too.
I know that lot.
Yeah, so we'd have to replan, I mean.
All right.
But hopefully it's a good use.
Yes. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, then can I get an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number 1178.418, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from multifamily residential R2 to central business B3 on property bounded by Second Street on the south, Taltec Street on the east, Third Street on the north, and Dry Lake Street on the west, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.418 as presented.
I have a motion and a second, can I please get a roll call vote, Gloria?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Powell.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, the next item is also a public hearing, we'll consider approval of ordinance number 1178.420. Mr. Horn, is this one yours?
I get the pleasure of this one.
All right.
All right. So Charo Lawrence is requesting a zone change from Garden and Light Industrial I1 to General Industrial I2 for approximately 80, 82 acres of land, generally located just north of the Central Arizona Commerce Park. You can see it's also located east of Burris. General plan has it in the manufacturing and industry category. The existing zoning, as mentioned, was I1, which is our Garden and Light Industrial, moving into the I2. When looking at the zone change criteria, we look at the following criteria, all of it's been covered in your staff report, we'll just hit on a few key items tonight. The first is that the action's consistent with the city's general plan, including goals and policies. Highlighted goal MI5, which is encourage appropriate and responsible industrial development in appropriate locations. It's located just north of the Central Arizona Commerce Park, it's looking to kind of expand into that northern area as part of this, part of the planning of the Central Arizona Commerce Park, there's a, right now it ends in a cul-de-sac. We've asked the new applicants that are in the north part of that to extend Commerce Drive into this portion of the property, and then Commerce Drive will extend up to Helebin Highway most likely, and maybe also out to Burris Road. The second one is a rezoning conformance to the general plan if it proposes land uses, densities, and intensities within the identified uses of the general plan. The requested zoning of I2, General Industrial, is appropriate in the manufacturing and industry land use category. And the third, the proposed zone change is necessary and proper at this time to meet the land use needs of the residents of the city. We'll just highlight one, a portion of the site is tentatively planned for an industrial user requiring the zoning district to be I2. The city's current demand for industrial land, as you all know, is very significant. This rezone, rezoning would expand that available area. In regards to notification, we met or exceeded all city requirements, we did not receive any comments. The planning commission on a 7-0 vote recommends city council approve the zone change request, DSA 2100243, from Garden and Light Industrial to Gar, uh, General Industrial, with the following conditions, and that's our standard right-of-way condition. Can I answer any questions?
So their proposal is to run Commerce Drive up into there?
Yeah, we've asked, so we do have an applicant that's processing on, actually on both sides of that right now. The one to the west hasn't been as active recently, but we've informed them that we would like to extend Commerce Drive up, and then the one to the east is actively looking at that site with a major site plan we expect to submittle soon. So we've discussed it with them. There is actually a, an access easement there right now, but we'd like to convert that into full right-of-way.
Because it has access to that West Lawrence Street, too, doesn't it?
We haven't determined whether we're going to access that Lawrence Street at this point. The user that's interested in this site hasn't, hasn't developed the plan that far yet. It, there is a challenge with rail there, so you would have There is a challenge with rail there, so you would have to go over the rail. It runs right down that property line. So, so we haven't determined whether it'll go out to Lawrence Street or where it will extend out to Burris Road. But we do think it'll go kind of in between the three houses up on Heelabend Highway.
Okay. Any of you have any questions in the council? All right, this is a public hearing, so I'll open this ordinance number 1178.420 to the public. Is there anyone here who would like to address the council on this subject?
Kirk McCarville, on behalf of Charles Lawrence, Big Charles, Little Charles, Nappin' Spike, my address is 9405 North.
I didn't know that was his first name.
Yeah. They're both named Charles. 9405 North Paseo Palaverdi, Casa Grande, Arizona. Full disclosure, we don't think we can get access on Lawrence Lane because there's a triple track there for service to the Commerce Park, and the central track is used for storage. So I don't think that's valid. In addition, we don't think we can go to the west because of the canal along Burris Road. It's really, really difficult to work, get access easements across that canal, and very expensive, and there's no guarantee we could get it done. So therefore, Commerce Drive is really the only viable alternative, and that's why everybody's focused on that.
Okay. Does he have access up to Heelabend?
Yes, he does.
So he's got this piece properly?
He owns all the frontage on Heelabend except for those three houses.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions, Kirk? Thank you. Anyone else? This is a public hearing.
Let me ask a question.
All right, let me close, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Powell, you have a question? You have a question? Go ahead.
Okay. Kirk, is that the, which lot is that? West Main Avenue?
Oh, that's the next one.
That's the next one, Mr. Powell.
Okay. Well, now you know my question, we'll get to it.
Not his property, but that's okay.
Any other questions? All right, hearing done, I'll entertain an ordinance number, please.
Ordinance number 1178.419. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Garden and Light Industrial to General Industrial on property generally located north of the Central Arizona Commerce Park and east of Berus Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of ordinance number 1178.419 as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is L4, which is another public hearing, and this is ordinance number 1178.420.
Mayor, if it's okay with you, I'd like to do the next three together.
Okay.
One presentation.
Okay. So she's going to do the next three all together?
Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jaclyn.
So the first request is located at 315 West Main Avenue. This is a zone change request from I-1 to B3. The second one is located at corner, bounded by Florence Street to the east, Second Avenue to the south, Top and Bottom to the west, and First Ave to the north. And the third one is located along Main Avenue as well, to the north, Florence Street to the east, First Ave to the south, and Sacatoon Street to the west. As you can see, the site also has two local historic sites, the Casa Grande Hotel and Shaughnessy House. Any proposals that would be requested here would have an appropriate application to the Historic Preservation Commission at that time of development. Staff would like to see these sites incorporated into any redevelopment proposal as an adapted reuse. So here is the existing zoning. Majority of this is I-1, with the exception of the block located on Top and Bottom and Florence Street. It is both I-1 and R2. And the proposed zoning is to B3. And again, these are city-owned properties as well. I don't remember if I mentioned that again.
Okay.
So as far as looking at the zone change criteria, B3 is an appropriate zoning district within the downtown general plan land use category. There are additional goals outlined in the staff report. However, one of the main goals is D2, to prioritize mixed-use development in and surrounding downtown areas, and to revise the zoning regulations to allow for mixed uses of urban form desired for the downtown core area, and to encourage development of land uses on the city-owned properties adjacent to the Shaughnessy House and Casa Grande Hotel that complement historic nature of these sites. Again, the rezoning to B3 would allow the most flexibility with regards to uses, setbacks, and parking requirements. And at the time of major site plan, the city will conduct community meetings for these sites as well. Staff met all the public hearing notifications. I did receive, again, a couple inquiries and comments on two of the sites. Again, these were just inquiries on what was proposed. So with that, Planning Commission forward to City Council recommendation to approve the zone change from I-1 to B3, and I-1 and R2 to B3, and then I-1 to B3 as well. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Any questions? Matt, go ahead.
I just had people ask me questions, but to be clear, there's nothing planned for this right now. We're changing the zoning, so anything that would go on this would be public hearings and go through the entire planning, zoning process, correct?
Correct, yeah. We will have, at the time of major site plan, community meetings to get more public input. Major site plans would go to City, or Planning Commission, and then if anything needs a conditional use permit, that would also go to Planning Commission, which would be a public hearing.
I think, I know you said that, but I just wanted to be clear for everyone, because people were questioning what's going in. Nothing's planned yet, but there'll be plenty of time to have input on that when it does happen.
Yes.
Do you know what the B3 is going to be?
Again, we're, these are...
It's a business, but I just was...
It's the downtown, central business.
It's a central downtown?
Yes.
Okay, so this is on Main Avenue?
Yes, it is, but it's south of downtown.
It's in the downtown zoning, zoning area.
Downtown's right here.
Downtown, general plan.
Across the tracks.
Right.
Across the tracks.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just to give the mayor and council a bit of a context, these are the lots that the city has assembled that had the industrial-type users that we've cleaned up and ultimately are looking to put a zoning that would allow for mixed-use opportunities for redevelopment. It was known, we did the Life on Main, Life on Main project several years ago, and this is really just billing in a zoning category that would allow for some level of development to occur there.
It just gives us more flexibility. Any other questions or comments?
Going back to the one on B3, do you know what they're going to do with that?
Nothing's been proposed yet, Mr. Powell.
Nothing has been formally proposed at this point in time?
We've got a property that I hate to see somebody come in and doing junky stuff.
Right.
On Main Avenue. So that's my, my concern is what they're going to do. I'd like to know that before we vote on it.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could, and Councilmember Powell, I'd like to remind you, as Mr. Raines was saying, the city owns these properties, so in order for anyone to develop it other than you, you'll have to sell that property to them. So you'll have a lot more control over what goes in here, because you'll have to determine what goes in. It's your property. So it's a little different than a rezoning of a private property where you may have those questions, but you will have a lot more control on these properties because you own them.
Right. Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing, so I'll open...
And Mr. Mayor, just to make clear, that we're having three separate public hearings, even though she did one.
Okay.
Development, because that's how the property was noticed. So we'll have to have each one.
So this will be a public hearing for ordinance, for item L4, ordinance number 1178.420. The floor is open. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing for L4, and then call for an ordinance number.
Ordinance number 1178.420. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Garden and Light Industrial to Central Business on property located at 315 West Main Avenue, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 1178.420 as presented.
Second.
Right of a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Powell?
I guess.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the next item is L5, again, a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing to item L5, which is ordinance number 1178.421. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing. And Gloria, I'll call for an ordinance number, please, on L5.
Ordinance number 1178.421. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Garden and Light Industrial to Central Business on property located at 201 West Main Avenue, 209 West Main Avenue, 12 South Sacatoon Street, 115 West Main Avenue, and 107 West Main Avenue, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.421 as presented.
Second.
Right of a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the last item is L6, again, a public hearing, so I'll open the floor to public. This is on ordinance number 1178.422. Is there anyone here to speak on this item, L6? Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing, and I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.422. An ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from Garden and Light Industrial to Central Business on properties located at 201 West Main Avenue, 209 West Main Avenue, 12 South Sacatoon Street, 115 West Main Avenue, and 107 West Main Avenue, Casa Grande,
Mayor McFarland, I move approval of ordinance number 1178.422 as presented.
Second.
Right of a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote on item L6?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Powell?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Thank you, Jaclyn.
All right, that concludes most of tonight's business. We do have an executive session, but the next item on the agenda, I move the reports up here, so that, I know you all wait with bated breath for the council's report, so I'm going to start with you, Mr. Lavender.
I just wanted to compliment the mayor and the city staff for an outstanding presentation of the state of the city. Just a couple of events coming up on March 29th. For those that are interested, the two finalists for the Casa Grande Elementary Superintendent will be doing a community forum at 6 o'clock. April 6th is the Cardinals, is the set date for the Cardinals Football Camp for 100 female athletes. So if people in the community are interested, they can contact me. And Councilmember Fitzgibbons and I today had the privilege of choosing 45 Pinal County seniors to receive the Cesar Chavez Scholarship for this year. And the event will be on April 22nd at 7 o'clock at the Neon Sign Park, for those who would like to come out and see these outstanding students. We read through all their applications today, and this is a deep group of talented students.
Excellent. Thank you, Jeff. Donna?
Um, there's lots of stuff that's been going on. I just wanted to congratulate everybody. Pinal County Fair was this past weekend, and it was nice to see so many pictures of families going back, back and forth and enjoying that. Also, I wanted to just do a shout-out and congratulate Lieutenant Brian Ramirez, who completed the FBI Academy, only one of three in our department's history, I believe, that has done that. So congratulations to him. And that's it.
Okay. Matt?
Thanks, Mayor. I've got just a couple of things. Also, to the fair, it's a great family event. I spent a lot of good times out there, and good luck to everyone who does it now. It's a lot of fun, a lot of work for all the family, let me tell you. But on the 16th of April will be the Day of Shredding Event sponsored by First American Credit Union, 1001 North Pinal Avenue. And we will also have the city doing the e-cycle program there, so you can bring electronics, you can bring papers to be shredded, and we can help you with that drive-through event. And the Youth Commission is very excited to be doing that. Also, want to thank the PIO Department for putting together all the videos for us and making us look really good. We appreciate it. They did a lot of editing for that, so thank you, guys. And another interesting item of note is that our state senator, T.J. Schope, is trying to shepherd a bill through to get $400 million to widen the I-10 between Casa Grande and Chandler. So anything we can do to help that, I mean, I know we all want it, we all need it, just not here, but the entire state and Southern Arizona. So it's moving slowly, but it's moving, so I'm happy to report that. That's all I have.
Mr. Powell?
I made a trip to Parker on Wednesday, and we went down there to, to inform them about floodwater harvesting. And it turned out really well. The Kritz is what they're called, and are the Colorado River Indian Tribes. There's four of them. And they control the water rights on 115 miles of the Colorado River. And we were very happy. I've got a friend there that's, that's Native American, and, and right now, there's, on the river, the tribes, there's 29 tribes in the Seven Basin area that need water. And the crisis is really severe. Everything you read right now about what's going on with, with water and where it is, and if it be possible, I'd like to present something, maybe the next meeting or something about where we are on that. I know Fred, he told me that when I butted in and was selling that stuff, the, he said it's time for that. He said that was something that one time was, was thought about as possible, but not. He said now is the time we need to act on it. So that was, that was very influential. Man is the, the water guru right now. So I've got some other things I'd like to share or spend maybe 15 minutes or something, if that would be possible. But the, we're really looking at some, at some severe times and the water that's not available and those type of things. It's, it's very serious. And the, I know the, the old futurists said the two, two biggest ghost towns in America will eventually be Phoenix and Las Vegas because they're so dry. And that's what's happening from California. All these states are just, it's, they're running out of water. They don't have the water. There's a lot of issues going on, and some of the ones are saying you've only got about a year and a half to get it right, or it's going to be even worse. So I would like to... So I would like to at least explain some of the things that are going on, so you'd be more informed on it. That'd be okay? Lisa, would that be okay?
Lisa?
Don't ask me. Ask him. So yeah, as far as that, thank you for the, everything with the state of the city. Mayor, great job on that and the videos. That was nice, you know, it was nice, you know, because it was at capacity, I believe, at the recreation center, but then a lot of people were able to view it online, which is really nice, too.
Still can.
Yeah, and still can. So that was great. The homeless coalition, of course, we meet monthly, and those meetings get more and more just informative, and there's so much going on in that hour and a half of meetings of all the different activities that are going on. I just wanted to highlight a couple. You know, we've talked about this Laundry Love program, and for those of you that aren't familiar, there's, I think, six or seven churches that do, provide laundry for whoever needs it twice a month. And just to give you an idea, in January, there were 96 people served with 513 loads of laundry. In February, 83 people with 434 loads of laundry. It costs, the church is about $800 every time they do this. You know, each load, I think they said, is like $3.50 a load now, so it's pretty expensive. So I just wanted to thank those churches that participate. The LDS churches, the one that's going to be coordinating, paying for this upcoming one on March 30th, and it's at the laundromat, at the old Pep Boys. That's where it is. So just want to thank them. The other thing was the veteran, the HOHP is also involved in the homeless coalition, and many of you know the, their location was sold downtown, and so they're there waiting for a new home. They've been talking to some people and trying to get some property for them to move, so I really hope the community, whoever's out there, can really work with them and try to get the Veteran Center a new home in Casco Grande. They do so much for our community, and I know they're just eagerly waiting to see if something happens for them. So the Faith Alliance, we had a, the mayor's luncheon, so Mayor, thank you so much for coming and participating. I think the, all the pastors, not all, but a nice number of pastors came and participated, and it was nice for the mayor to give them an update on what's going on in this city and how it impacts the churches, which is huge impact. As more and more people come to the community, you know, they need to know how they're going to get involved. They also had a blood drive this past weekend, and we all know the demand for blood right now is huge demand, so they were able to have, or hit, I think they had 95 donors on Saturday participate. So thank you to the Faith Alliance and all of those who donated blood. That's it.
All right. Powell?
No report, Mayor.
All right.
Glad to be here.
Yeah, good to see you. Feeling better?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I'm getting there.
Getting there.
Thank you.
So yeah, lots of things going on. I mean, even last week, we had the Penal Partnership Breakfast on Friday, also had the Arizona Mayor's Education Roundtable on Friday. And as the co-chair, or not the co-chair, but vice chair of the roundtable, the topic, the hot topic of the day is attainable housing. And it's, it's in every conversation that I'm in anymore, whether it's with GPEC. We got a report from Elliot Pollak on last week when I had my GPEC board meeting, and Elliot Pollak painted a pretty dark picture in terms of affordable, or I should say attainable. He called it affordable, but a lot of people want to call it attainable. But basically, from 2020 to 2021, the median house price in the Phoenix market, now this is just the Phoenix market, and if you took all the jobs, nurses, police, firefighters, high school, a chef, middle school teachers, and all the way to retail. And the first, in 2020, there was some green, and green says that you can afford a median-priced house. So the first two columns, so nurses and police, but the next one, firefighters, down to chefs, they were like, they could rent one bedroom of places to stay, and everybody else couldn't afford it. Median income, or median-priced home. In 2021, the first two columns, which is nurse and police, three, only in three cities could you afford to buy a median house price. And that would, that's if you're a nurse. If, the rest of them are either yellow, orange, or red, just in one year. So the impact of, of the economy, the inflation, lack of housing, which is driving up the housing costs and the price of housing, besides the fact that builders can't get materials to build them, is really creating a major problem. And now it's, now it's on GPEC's radar because it's affecting their work in economic development. So just, just so you know, there's lots of talk about it, even the mayor's education roundtable, the topic was affordable housing. So it's, it's all over the place. On the, on the happier note, we did have a fundraiser for the Valley Humane Society on Saturday, very successful. They raised a lot of money for-
That's nice.
-for the animals. And then this week, I did have a PRT meeting last week and one this week, so as the chairman of the PRTA, we, I had to make sure that we covered all of the options, because this is coming fast and pretty furious, and we'll get you additional information on that as it comes available, which should be shortly. And we'll also get that information out to the public, too, because we need to build a public information piece on that. Let's see, what else have I got? Probably enough, there's a lot going on. We do have the Little League kickoff this Saturday, so the Little League kicks off on Saturday. We've got a project launch with Penal County, it's a geospatial project, and then some meetings on Copper Mountain this week, so. Still a lot going on, expect things to continue. I did some forecasting on population growth, and my numbers, I think, were conservative. And in by, in the next 10 years, the number is between 97 and 104,000 by 2033, something like that. And that's conservative, so. Anyway, things we need to work on, and reasons why we need geo-bonds, and all that is good stuff. 2020, 2033, sorry.
Oh, 33.
Yeah, 10 years. So that's all I have. Anybody else? Okay? Thank you, everybody. I need a motion to move into, yes? Okay. Motion to move in exec session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll stand adjourned until we clear the room.